Morning, everyone. Happy New Year to everyone. It's eight thirty-three on January third, two thousand twenty-three, which is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectment of the Town of Canaan. This is a hybrid meeting. We have some people on. By. Zoom and. First item on our agenda is the minutes of the prior meeting on December thirteenth.
I'd like to move that we add two additional items to the agenda. Uh, the first motion would be to uh. Selectments comments, which we've had. For for years, uh, and for whatever reason have been. Okay, but I'm gonna move that we add those back in. We have public comments. Members of the public are welcome to talk about anything. I think the same should be true for selecting. And and I personally find it helpful, and I think the public does, when you talk in your comments, as you often do about COVID. Other town-related issues and activities and such, so that would be my first motion.
I I don't plan to make any comments today, so.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Against.
Two to one. The second motion I would like to make is to, with respect to the reappointment of Paul Foley. As a police commissioner, Paul. Uh, well, I'll get into this later, but I think I think it's it's appropriate for him to be reappointed. So I would move that we add that agenda item. Uh, do I have a second?
Do you want to say something?
Well, I don't think this is going to be necessary after we have our executive session, so.
Okay, I'll second the discussion of the Police Commission. Yeah.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Against.
Thank you.
I just have one other addition under uh. Agenda number nine, discussion of part-time employees. I I just, if we can add and vote, discussion and vote on that item. Now, the second.
A second here.
All those in favor, say aye. Against?
So.
First left witness against. Okay, um, that's all I have.
Okay, back to the agenda, minutes of the meeting of December thirteenth. Any comments or corrections?
None here.
Public comments, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics, schedule review and or vote comments.
Did you want to approve the minutes?
Uh, I moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Alcohol I smell. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, comments electronically should be sent to the following email address, B O S distribution at newcanac t dot gov, and we'll read them before they get into the meeting. That brings us to item three, America Rescue Act appropriations. We have two items to present today. One is, uh, we're gonna take these in any order. Who's who's on for St. Eulogious? Oh, I didn't see him. Okay. St. Eulogious is the first item, so Father Rob, please come up to the.
Eulogious, you mean Eulogious.
What did I say?
Eulogious.
Eulogious.
Morning. I think I have yours.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Yes.
Actually, don't move that.
This one right over here is.
It's better here at this one. Don't move that mic.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you for the time and Happy New Year. Um, so this regards ARPA funds that uh. Could be allocated for early education in our town, um, including daycare. And so St. Eulogious School comes to you today. Uh, we're currently a K through eight school situated downtown. And beginning in the fall of two thousand twenty-four, the school will add a program for three and four-year-old children, as well as uh, the new trend in transitional kindergarten for those who are not quite ready for K. So painting the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval and also um, the completed construction. We will build a new school building on the existing footprint that will house pre-K through eight. And we believe that the addition of the threes, the fours, and what we call the TK will made a demonstrated need in the town. And so we're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to get that started. So uh, just a sort of composite of what the pre-K will in- involve. So it'll function as part of St. Eulogious School, which is a Catholic elementary school of the Diocese of Bridgeport. It is a diocesan-run school. And uh, we are the landlords. I am the actual landlord. Um, it will have a maximum class size of sixteen, uh, in at least the threes and fours. A transitional K can vary from just a few children up to the sixteen. So we're guessing that from year to year would be anywhere from four to eight or so children. Uh, it would run on a five-day full-day schedule rather than a part-time schedule, which we think will be helpful in town. And uh, the drop-off, the question was raised, what would the timing be? Uh, it, the drop-off would be about eight-thirty in the morning and pickup would be about two-twenty. Uh, just for your information, the tuition uh, will be the K through eight tuition plus fifteen hundred dollars, which would be a total for of ten thousand eight hundred dollars for parishioners. This is a tradition in the Catholic elementary tradition that parishioners got a little bit of a break and thirteen thousand for non-parishioners. Um, the curriculum will be play-based, but also aligned with the K through eight curriculum. And so that would include specials, as we call them, like physical education, art, foreign language, music, uh, religion. Um, a buddy mentoring program with um, upper school children working with the the young ones, and of course lunch options and not on the sheet, but nap time.
We all need that.
I'm, we all need that. Anyway, uh, so why, why would we do this? We are the only Catholic elementary school in the Diocese of Bridgeport, which is Fairfield County, basically, that does not have pre-K education. So we've been wanting to get into this. Um, we were, we were doing it anyway, and we're just hopeful uh, that we are going to help a need in the town. We've done some feasibility studies both within the parish and just in town in general to demonstrate there's a need for that. Uh, we also feel that um. It is going, the full-day option is going to be helpful to some parents who really need to have their kids there longer than just a few hours. And um, so we also uh, we've seen on social media a great need. And when registration time comes, a little bit of a panic among parents in the town. Uh, with respect to the admission, um, the school, all of our schools in the diocese are open to Catholic and non-Catholic students, just as a point of information. So we're hopeful.
I should have made clear, because I'm a parishioner of St. Eulogious, I'm gonna accuse myself in this matter. Um, I would make one comment. I think this matter should be moved on to the Board of Finance and Town Council for consideration, but uh, you you folks are welcome to ask questions and.
Oh, great. Thank you so much, Father Rob. I just, one thing, I I think it's terrific in terms of uh, what you plan to do. I saw the whole plans for your campus that looks great. Loved your video. Um, I just wonder, as as we, we haven't had a chance to talk about it, but there's a lot of preschools in um, in in New Canaan. Uh, of both, no sort of commercial, non-for, not-for-profit as well for profit. And I'm just wondering, and that this is really to my colleagues here, whether we ought to be thinking about. If there is going to be a distribution from the ARPA funds, whether it's not more appropriate to consider all of the preschools that we have here in town. Where, rather than just singling one out. So that's really not for you necessarily, but for our consideration.
Understand the point.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Much so.
Absolutely, but um. At at one time, I know that we, again, as a group, have discussed potentially the need for a daycare. Um, that we do have obviously a great need for that as well. Is that, has we've seen any? Interest in that? Has that come up? This is, you don't have any plans for daycare portion of that.
I can comment on it, that people uh, in town have approached me and we have investigated that. We haven't made a final decision. I didn't have enough information on that to present to you today, so I I didn't want to be without detail on that.
Sure.
But safe to say that it is under consideration for our program. Maybe it involves, it's quite a task. Um, and it's actually quite expensive for the, for the students and their parents. Um, so we want to try to keep the cost, you know, reasonable.
Of course.
Uh, and the state requirements are are quite uh, involved. Let's just put it that way.
A whole different licensing.
But the need, I would agree, exists in town for sure.
Yeah, sure. Okay. So that's my only guess. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
You, you, I think you make a good point, Kathleen. I mean, we, we, we've got a number of preschools in town um, that have survived COVID and and have, you know. It's been difficult. It's been difficult. So yeah, I, you know, I would want to rethink this um, and 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 maybe look at supporting uh, um. Yet more than than one uh, particular preschool. The the other thing, and as I have to mention this, Father, because I I, and I'm not sure about the, the law on this with respect to the use of ARPA funds to support. Um, educational facilities that that encourage or include religious teaching. Um, I think we have a mix within town of, I think you'd mentioned, Kathleen, at St. Mark's.
Faith-based.
Has faith-based. I think First Press is not faith-based, which is where my kids went. Um, so there's, I I think we'd wanna, I'd wanna hear from Ira. And his firm with respect to.
Yeah, I mean, I just say that the the Y is a Christian-based organization, and I think they receive funding as well. My understanding of the funding, and I might be wrong, is that it is for uh, launching, increasing. So I think that's the, the difference. So we've never done this before. That's why we came to you with this.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm like Kathleen, I'm very much encouragement, encouraging with respect to what you guys are trying to do, and including the, you know, the build-out. Of St. A's, which I think is a fantastic addition to town.
It does, it helps the town.
With, with on the other side of the street, we've got the new library, so all of this is 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 great. I just, on the legal side, I just want to make sure we get this right with respect to the, the use of our funds. Thank you, Father.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Father.
Appreciate your time.
Next up is Russ and Phil. And actually, LB, are you here with this as well as just Russ?
All right, let's see if we can share our screen successfully. Initiate screen sharing. Yes, thank you. Stand by once.
Congratulations, Chief. First day, first day on the job. Second day on the job is the third day.
Great way to start the new year.
All right. It should be presenting full screen now. Indeed it is. Alright, so thank you, everyone, for joining us, and thank you for the Chiefs, uh, as well as I see Stuart Salabini, uh, who leads CERT uh, here in support of this. The Town of New Canaan has uh, had an incident command unit since two thousand and seven. Our last unit was acquired with grant funds, uh, very similar to this. Um, it is an onsite command post for town officials and first responder, incident commanders to coordinate emergency disaster and large event operations. Uh, it was used during COVID as an onsite command center for Health Department site. Uh, and actually worth mentioning that Jen Iselson, who was unfortunately under the weather, would have been joining us at the table in support of this as well. Um, serves as an alternate emergency town operation center uh, in the event that the Police Department headquarters is inaccessible, whether it's due to acts of terrorism, natural disaster, or other reasons. Um, and it's also used annually to run the Duca family forth as a command post. Um, so. We are all in agreement that we need to replace it. The one that we have now um, is a trailer, and as a committee, we've agreed that the trailer doesn't get used as often as it should. Because very few people know how to maneuver a thirty-five-foot-plus trailer. Um, and those few who can maneuver the trailer are not available twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week, like our first responder agencies that are available. Um, generally, we would have to call Highway and hope, you know, someone was there that was available. Um, we use this incident command unit, and we would in the future, especially if it was a mobile unit. Uh, at fires, hazardous materials incidents, mass casualty incidents, uh, crime scenes. I think it's important to note that, you know. Our police officers, when conducting investigations, crime scenes are in large part having to do their documentation and exercise in their patrol cars or on the hood. Um, negotiations, should we, heaven forbid, have a hostage negotiation situation, you would want someone in that enclosed space to be able to communicate. Um, our annual live burn training for the fire department, um, any example where, for example, we put MVA, motor vehicle accident fatalities, because it would be, again, a crime scene investigation potentially. Uh, it would serve as the backup emergency operations center for the town. Uh, it is also used in points of distribution, which is what a pod is, which is medical or other. So actually, we had that happen. Our trailer was brought out for distribution of, uh, I believe it was masks, not the test kits, for masks, mass distribution during the height of the pandemic. Um, it would also get used at major events. Uh, caffeine carburetors is happening four times a year and is a huge spectator event where coordination and security is incredibly important. The Fourth of July is our biggest event every year in town. Um, the FCAC's at Waveney, a thousand-plus students from across the region come in. Um, as well as smaller events like caroling on the green and holiday strolls and Halloween walks. It makes sense. And the town should have that function of a central point uh, where first responder agencies, as well as event organizers, can coordinate. Um, whether it's just the day-to-day running of the event, or God forbid, we have exceptional circumstances where we need to work uh, through an emergency. Uh, the current unit needs a replacement because the roof is leaking and not repairable. Um, it's exposing the sensitive radios, telephones, and other electronic equipment to damage. Um, the body itself is rotting and rusting. Uh, per the Town Highway Service text, the roof is not repairable or worth repairing, given the overall condition. Basically, it's similar to like having an RV or a trailer, that you just don't replace the roof on those. Uh, and there's obviously a potential injury hazard. Uh, as you can see, the door and frame, this is the step area where you would enter. The vehicle is rotting. Um, and at some point, it's going to give way. Um, this is an example of our leaking roof. Which then leaks down onto our radio cabinets, which are starting to fail. Um, why ARPA funds? Per the Department of Treasury, uh, ARPA state and local uh, final rule on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Emergency operations centers and response equipment is specifically called out as an eligible use for ARPA funds. Uh, improvements, to quote, improvements to our construction of emergency operations centers and acquisitions of emergency response equipment. E.G. emergency response radio systems is specifically put in the guidance from the federal government for ARPA. Uh, our last incident command unit was purchased with grant funds and aligns exactly with this guidance, and by using ARPA funds, we leave taxpayer dollars for projects that are not ARPA-eligible. Um, we're proposing a mobile command unit. The total cost is in the neighborhood of three hundred and eighty thousand. That includes a contingency. Uh, big gas motor, it's similar in size to an ambulance, uh, with workstations for up to five people, with radios, telephones, and a basically a wireless modem inside of it. Um, we wouldn't put computers in there, because as everyone knows, whenever you have a computer, it needs to update, and if it just sits in the truck all the time, then it'll sit downloading updates for two hours. Uh, so it'll be bring your own device, right? Then everyone will connect in. Uh, eat an AC, a surveillance camera, and wireless modem, and this is an example of the inside of it. Um, our initial request was for the full three-eighty, but understand that there are numerous good causes and and reasons for distribution of ARPA. So uh, we're, uh, modified was two hundred and fifty, and then the remaining one hundred and thirty would be in our capital request for emergency management.
Russ, remind me, um, has, has this been in the budget requests?
It was.
Capex over this.
It's in cap before, and it was a trailer, and then since we've had a number of discussions with just about everybody involved, we realized that wasn't a great move. Um, just from the fact that it wouldn't get utilized, and we couldn't get to it if we needed. Um, so it is.
You think this will be moved, that will be used a lot more?
Yes.
Often, because it's not a trailer.
Yes, and I'm hoping that it gets used beyond just first responder agencies. I mean, if any town department needs a mobile office, whether it's the Fire Marshal's Office, whether it's wetlands, whatever, this is available to them as an asset.
Thanks, Russ. Very interesting. Um, you said that we had got gotten a grant for this particular, for the current unit, right? Where did we get that grant from?
I preceded my time. I don't know, Stuart, if you know where the money, the funds came from back in two thousand and seven, I think that that well preceded my time.
Right. I mean, would it make sense wherever that source of funds or to to tap into that as well?
So we investigated that, and I I work with Greg Riley, who's our new grant writer, and we did conduct an investigation, see what other grant funds were available out there. Uh, in discussions with uh, Region One Demus and Bob Kenny, and then um, also looking across what else is available. There are not grant programs currently that we are aware of, or that we could find that would be eligible for this type of a purchase. Whereas the ARPA specifically calls us out as an.
Which is helpful. Yeah. So you you think that we just funded this in two thousand and seven from a capital expense?
Say it was probably Homeland Security, nine eleven, something. On that.
Right. I believe there were Homeland Security funding uh, back at that point in time.
And as you know, that we, these ten types of grant programs tend to unfortunately follow major incidents, right? So here we are, we have had a pandemic and a major incident, and this is an example of something that could be used for that, so.
Right. And where would this be located?
That is a subjective, great discussion. Uh, I am hoping we can find a home for it in the new police department. Uh, of course, that's going to be dependent upon clearance. Uh, we're also discussing.
Do you want it housed indoors? I mean, or is that?
Verbally would be housed indoors and plugged in, just like you would an ambulance or a fire truck. Um, that way, the modems run and things update. That would be the ideal state. Um, so we are hoping to put it there. Uh, we're also active in discussions with, if the police department gets a range, perhaps we end up putting it adjacent, uh, a garage facility adjacent to that. Um, worst-case scenario is buying a temporary uh, garage, for lack of a better term, and housing it there, which we've been, I think, for the last six months in discussions with pretty much everybody in town to find out. Uh, to town departments to figure out where the right location would be. I I hate to say, the good and bad news is, even if we order this tomorrow, we have over two years before it would even show up to figure that out.
And we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
I'm sorry. And what about the existing uh, trailer? Is that going to be just?
Well, I think the town's disposal policy, we would have to put it out to see if someone wishes to purchase it. Um, I mean, it still rolls, but I don't think it's got many years left, to be honest. It doesn't fit our needs, but it is a equipment hauler, so someone hypothetically could put landscaping equipment in or something in the back of it.
So, um, so with the, with respect to where it goes, would the preference be presumably to be at the PD? Building as opposed to the training facility, or are you guys agnostic with respect to that? And I I guess my follow-up question is, have you, has the police building committee, uh, and we will be speaking to one of its existing members, I think later in the meeting. Been made aware of the fact that this is a, it would be nice to have.
We haven't discussed this specifically, but we do have room in the new building facility in the plans.
You do, Chief.
We could probably fit this. We just have to.
How big is it? How how big is it?
Uh, it's roughly the same length as an ambulance, but our problem is the vertical clearance. But that said, when we have.
So it's higher than an ambulance?
It is by the mast, but that's on the back. But again, we can change that. We can adjust this to fit whatever space we have for it.
And we can also talk with our architect and and see if it would fit, if not, what adjusting would be, but this would be an asset that we would be able to accommodate indoors if it would fit. And then if we needed that space for other reasons, we could pull this out and use the space for other reasons, if if that ever presents itself. But for the, the majority of its life, we could store this asset indoors and out of the weather and preserve it for much longer than we have.
Right. Thank you, Chief. It's helpful.
And and it's, you know, it's also part of the larger discussion, same thing with emergency management in general. Our emergency supplies are sort of scattered between numerous buildings. We're in active discussions about where is the right home for all of our cots, the MREs, the water, the food supplies, those things that are in the basements of various buildings in town and difficult to access. At some point, we're pushing strategically, and I'm sure we'll be coming back to this body with a recommendation, that we need a place to put it. And I think there's this symbiosis that wherever this goes, that makes sense, that those resources should be there as well, because you wanted it in an area where you can pull a truck up and load it. Um, that said, there's a long lead time for a unit to order like this, and it works timing-wise with what's going on in the police department.
Tell me something about this tower that you raised up. Is that for radio frequency or?
No, so it's, it's a camera tower. Uh, so what it is, is a telescoping boom, and then it's got um, one or two uh, cameras that allow for basically surveillance. Uh, it's, they're remote-operated, so inside the vehicle, the person could sit in the back, and they'd have, they'd have a little joystick or something like that. And those two masts would allow them to, you know, I'll give you an example, Fourth of July, a missing kid, they can start panning the audience and look for those individuals that are missing.
That's a great example. Hmm, because we.
Every, every.
Every, every Fourth of July.
Thank you.
It's all, I hate to say, you know, would a drone do the same thing? Sure, but we don't have people who are licensed to do that sort of stuff, and I, you know, I think that this is a, a more elegant solution. Plus, you know, it can be used in other capacities and emergencies, uh, so.
No further questions. Thank you.
None here.
I fully support this, and as I indicated to Russ, I've talked to Rob, Todd Labiary, about uh, whether we ought to do this partially with, or in part, partially as a capital item. Board of Finance will make that decision. Um, and uh, again, I recommend we pass this on to both the Board of Finance and the Town Council for decision. So no further questions for anybody on this item?
No.
Thank you all. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Before you guys leave, um, the Route one oh six incident, just want to thank you guys for. Yeah, saving a man's life.
It's a question, the, the officer that arrived on scene, if we applied a tourniquet, and without question, saved that young man's life.
Yeah. So, well done, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. So again, I'm gonna recuse myself from the St. Eulogious item, but uh. We need to uh. Uh. Have a vote on moving these items to the uh, first to the combined Board of Finance Town Council Subcommittee. Uh, and then uh. Uh, to the Board of Finance and the Town Council, so how do you want to do this?
I think I say, I'll, I'll say subject to follow-up with uh, town attorney and and discuss further discussion on the same.
I thought you already had Nick's input on that.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, it, this says it's not.
But uh, what, what Nick didn't know was the school's operator is a nonprofit, has for many years, sponsored by the diocese, but it's a, it's a nonprofit. So it's in terms of being eligible um, as a nonprofit. Um, and Nick's question separately about whether there's any conflict with. I guess federal law, constitutional law, whatever, in terms of church and state. Um, I think, um, you know, most of the other uh, nursery schools are are tenants in in church buildings and not sponsored by the church, but uh. In this case, this is a nonprofit school. Um, many of the other not uh, pre-K programs are profit-oriented and uh.
I, I, I don't, two parts in here that's, I'm not comfortable authorizing the request to use the funds and.
He says, here is a threshold question. It is unclear if the school is in fact an eligible nonprofit entity. But even if it is, based on what has been reported to me thus far, I am struggling to find a clear connection between how the school was negatively impacted during COVID. In a manner that now requires capital improvements for a new daycare center.
Well, but that's, that's, that's a finding that the, a decision-maker like the Town Council and the Board of Finance would have to make. That's not, that's not something a lawyer decides, so.
Well, we're, we're the Board of Selectmen, so we can decide whether we put it forward, but uh.
This is, this is your lawyer giving you advice that.
Not my lawyers, town's, town's attorney.
Whatever.
It's just that I believe the requested expenditure would not be an eligible use of ARPA funds, and the town is not permitted to offer the, those funds to the school. At least without further, uh, not, at least not without further information.
And that's the whole point.
Yeah, so I think before we put past this particular, in my view, I I think this, we should get some more information.
Okay. Move to table.
Okay, on the emergency management command vehicle, um, I will be approve the recommendation for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to the, uh, moving on to the Board of Finance and the Town Council.
Second.
The discussion?
None here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So where, can we just, where do we stand in terms of the remaining allocation?
It's a great, great question.
Yeah. And so this includes the um, the two proposals for today, or it does not? Okay. So the remaining allocation of four hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-four. So we take one fifty, well, presuming that it goes through all the way through Town Council, right? Okay. Um, okay, so we're down to the, yeah, yeah. When does it have to be fully allocated?
Be allocated by twenty-four, two thousand and forty-four.
Oh. Okay, we got time. Okay. Great.
Next up is Tiger. Happy New Year, Tiger.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good morning. So uh, this first item is actually a approval of uh, fuel dispensing pumps at the Highway Department. They act as our main area for um, dispensing fuel for all town departments. We got a quote from Liberty Auto of twenty-three thousand two fifty, added a fifteen percent contingency of thirty-five hundred dollars for a total of twenty-six thousand seven fifty. Uh, the funds are currently available in the Highway Department was, uh, we did not have this budgeted. Um, we were looking to put this in our capital budget for this year, but the pumps are failing now. We've had to do several patches to get everyone up and running. And we need to replace them now, so there's a reason for uh, bringing this forward. Um, I did have the first selectmen due to the fact it was an emergency nature and the fact that our pumps are down ahead. I did have the first selectmen due to the fact it was an emergency nature and the fact that our pumps were down. I had the first selectman approve the expenditure on December 15th. This is the first opportunity I've been able to bring it to you for formal approval by the board.
Questions?
Yeah. So we went to Liberty Auto or?
Went, we went, we, yeah, Liberty's been our, our contractor of, that we've been utilizing for our pump servicing for ever. We did go to some others and their scope of work was quite large compared to what Liberty's was. And then one others was slightly less than this, but in speaking to our mechanics and speaking to the fact that Liberty's been our servicing agent and is on call with us. We felt it was necessary or more prudent to go with Liberty.
But so as a regular basis, you do seek others, not just one. Okay. Thank you.
No further questions?
So we're up and running with this, right?
We're up and running temporarily. Yeah, the pumps are being ordered, you know, it's everything's, you know, has an issue on supply chain, but they were able to get us up and running. So we are running. We're just, it's a Band-Aid.
So is there going to be more?
No.
26,000 is?
That's our number.
Okay.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Liberty Auto to 26, up to 26,750 to replace the fuel dispensing pumps at the highway department. Second.
Second here.
Further discussion?
Thank you. And this next item is for replacement of a generator at the Lapham Community Center. We did solicit bids from four companies. We had two companies come for the walkthrough, and unfortunately only one presented a bid. Northeast Generator, who we've worked with extensively in the past, they came forward with a price of 115,926. We added a contingency of $9,074 for a total of $125,000. The month, the funds are currently available in our, in this year's capital budget, given the fact that right now they're operating without one. We'd like to move forward with this. This purchase.
It's not working?
Not at present, no.
How long has it been?
Uh, it's, it's, it went down a couple of months ago. And then we put together this.
But we, we, it was in the budget from last budget season, so we knew it was.
We knew that it was.
Last leg.
Yes.
Good.
So this will be a, at present will be propane fired, but when we get natural gas up, we'll convert it over to natural gas. So it'll be a natural gas generator, so.
Does the 8% contingency just to round it up to 125?
You only had 125 in the budget.
What's the timing for natural gas at?
The, right now, we're working on a, a final, what they call a red line of where they'll actually put the line in coming, coming through off of a Lapham Road and into the, into the parcel. And then from there, we have to grant them an easement for that, since it'll service multiple facilities, not just Lapham, but it'll service the kiddie pool, the pool, paddle.
So then I can follow the driveway? They're going to go just underneath the, through the woods? Or I don't know what.
At present, we have two, two looks. One is coming up through the woods adjacent to the pool, to the north side of the pool. Uh, that's a little bit problematic as far as it's kind of steep then and banking through there. And then the other is to come in the driveway to Banco Pool, up along the existing easement for Tennessee Gas branch one way towards Lapham, staying in the grass, and then the branch the other way towards paddle and then the house itself. So that's, those are the, those are the two looks. The, the secondary part of it going to both, both facilities, Lapham and Waviny House, those are an easy. It's really just figuring out the best route to get up the hill or to come around through the, through the parking.
It's funny, because you look at the sat imaging, you can see satellite imaging, you can see that the pipeline that goes.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a brown compared to the rest of it. Interestingly enough, even though it's deep enough where you wouldn't necessarily.
Still see it.
You can still see.
Yeah. I have no, no further questions, Kev.
I move to approve the request from Public Works to enter into a counter of Northeast Generator for up to $125,000 for the installation of a new natural gas propane generator at Lapham Community Center. Second?
Second.
For the discussion? None? All in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Howe. And Ashley Cheryl, I guess this is. John and Cheryl.
Good morning. We are here to present Stefano Di Frederico to a position of groundsman two with the Parks Department. We had originally received over 63 applicants. We interviewed over 13. We did bring Stefano back a second time. He, as you can see from his resume, has worked for Stu Leonard since 2010. He was a shop manager, store manager, has quite a few people below him. He has his CDL and also has his own landscaping business. So we feel he would fit very well in the Parks Department.
Questions?
Did you want to say something, John?
No.
Yeah. Is that also posted for internal?
Yes, we posted internal. We had no applicants.
Okay, okay, great. That's correct. And, and generally when someone signs on as an employee, do they maintain their current, or will he be stepping down from one of these? Is he still going to stay at Stu Leonard's, for instance?
No, he will, he will step down. He is very happy to join us all the time.
But the other side of that question is, will he maintain his landscaping business?
What, what quite often happens is he'll, he'll maintain, they usually, somebody would usually maintain a few accounts.
Right.
The good accounts, so to speak. But talking to him, he's definitely willing to work the overtime that we need him for and and events, things like that, so.
That's a good question. I mean, from an HR perspective, that's okay, right?
We do have a lot of our guys, whether it be fire, police, Public Works that do have side jobs, whether the commissions know about it or we bring it in front of the Board of Selectmen, we do ask them about it. John will monitor it, and if we have a concern, we will deal with it.
Right.
Is, is he related to anybody else? That's great.
Like father, like son.
I move, we approve the request of Human Resources to hire Stefano Di Frederico as a full-time groundsman two.
Second here.
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thanks, Cheryl. Ross, are you coming back for this item? Or this is Ann, I guess, Ann and Russ.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we, two in front of you for the tax reimbursement program that are looking for that didn't come earlier. I'm sorry if I pronounce his name wrong. Sven Ragsen has applied his, or his application against his tax reimbursement and approved, and Russ Kimes. The only one, I just need to make sure you're aware of it. Russ's bill is in a different name, but he showed that he purchased the property in October. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that and on approval.
Questions?
What, what is the, the cap? Is it 2000?
2000, yes.
And so that includes both motor vehicle and property estate.
Real estate, correct.
Okay. Okay. And I'm sorry, I don't think I understood what you're saying. The, is it for the Kimes property, it's under a different name, is that what you're saying?
It was under a different name in July, but it's since been purchased by Mr. Kimes in October of this, the past year, sorry, past year.
Okay. It looks like two different properties. Is that right?
No, just one.
One is one property. One's 134, one's 136.
And the assessor's card is attached to show the change in owner show.
And the command vehicle is going to go there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
This is, this is a good program.
I know.
It's, it's the least we can do as a town.
I approved, I moved to approve the request of the abatement of real and personal property taxes that were due July 1, 2022, as per the property tax abatement and other benefits for volunteer first responders. Approved by the Town Council on June 17, 2022. The two items on our tablets is discussed by Ann. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Contracts under 10.
No comments?
Any questions? No, I I have no comments, and I want to go into executive session on several personnel matters we have discussed before we go into budget season, so.
We still have item number nine.
Well, this, I'm suggesting we go into executive session on that because we can't talk about the policy without talking about individuals, and then we can come out and talk about it further if you want.
Well, I, I think we did that last meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
I think what I'd like to do is have this opportunity to just review the process. The, it's a public document now, because we, we post it and it includes.
We did post it. We put it on for possible executive session.
Well, it's on the.
It's on the, on the public packet. That's.
Oh, okay. Well, it ought to be. So let me, if, if you may, I'd like, if, if I may, I'd like to.
Again, we're going to have to discuss this in executive session.
I, I disagree.
Okay, well, let's go as far as we can, and then if there's anything that needs to be brought to executive.
I don't think, you're not going to mention names, Kev, right? It's like not necessary.
There's an exhibit, it's really about positions.
It's about, it's about policy, it's about, it's, it's a terrific memorandum.
Thank you. So this is a follow up to discussions that we've been having for the last several meetings. And at the last meeting, as you recall, First Selectman said that we, I could work with, and I want to grateful to Mimi Pitt and Cheryl Jones in terms of putting together what is the current process and the data supporting it. And that's basically shared in the December 29th memo to, to this board. Essentially, both the town charter and the ordinance, the town code specifically permit or have the Board of Selectmen be the ultimate authority for approval or appointment of personnel under the jurisdiction of the selectmen. I won't go through all the details, but it's specifically highlighted where in both the charter and in the code, this is pretty clear. And so I'll go on, there's other just paragraphs that suggest what the specific role of the Board of Selectmen is in terms of whether it's for budget purposes, compensation issues, other examples of the selectmen's duties and roles with respect to vacancy transfers, appointment and dismissal of town employees. So we received data that basically, we had to do a FOIA request to get the data, but all, there are four classifications of employment that include a full-time, part-time, seasonal and temporary employees. And so while all these status groups are employees, definitively, they're not 1099 workers. They are eligible for workers' comp under KIRMA. They are subject to full background checks and their hours are subject to the Department of Labor Employment Guidelines. So the Board of Selectmen approval is, has been consistent for all full-time employees and up until recently, part-time employees as well. Inconsistently, we have had approvals of seasonal employees and temporary employees as well. So we reviewed some of the processes and we came up with the following recommendation. We will continue bringing forward, as we just did here, for the groundsman two position. Any full-time employee, employed to work for 35 hours, eligible for health and pension benefits. This includes both union and non-union positions. And there are 183 currently employed, employed as full-time employees, and we've approved all of those. In part-time, this is where they are eligible as employees for sick time. They're also eligible for the defined contribution plan. If their work hours are greater than 1,500 per year, these employees are eligible for health benefits under the Affordable, Affordable Care Act. So there are 18 currently employed, part-time employees. Seven have been previously approved by the Board of Selectmen. And our proposal on the memo has that for the 11 positions that are currently indicated as part-time, I'm making a recommendation that we approve those retroactively. For the same, for the seasonal employees, these are not, these employees are not eligible for benefits. They are, historically, they've been brought to the Board of Selectmen as a group by department, such as Steve Banco would bring, for instance, the lifeguards, the camp staff, et cetera. All are subject to background checks like all other new hires. And we recommend that this would be happening really maybe once a quarter before the new season in terms of recommendations for seasonal employees. There are currently employed 25 seasonal employees, many of which are teachers at Lapham, our tennis, tennis attendants and some administrative assistants. And that we would recommend also retroactively that the body, Board of Selectmen approve these as well. And then going forward, any new part, full-time, part-time and seasonal employees would be brought to the Board of Selectmen prior to their actual hiring. We decided, we looked at the temporary employees. These are employees who are not eligible for benefits. They work less than 20 hours per week. And we suggest, and this is taking into consideration the concerns of first selectmen, that the hiring of temporary employees such as poll workers, consultants, get about drivers and dispatchers, any employees expected to be working less than 20 hours would not need to be brought before the Board of Selectmen. I think it's good practice maybe to share that list once in a while, so we're aware of it. And certainly anybody who's moved from temporary employees to any one of the previous three categories would be brought before the Board of Selectmen. So accordingly, there is a resolution that basically goes through each of these points in terms of reflecting the town charter and the town code of ordinances. There's also mentions that, that the purpose of the ordinance is to give effect to the provisions of the town. Duquesne's Town Charter, providing for the establishment of rules and regulations and a plan of action and compensation for all town employees. It goes on to, again, reiterate the four classifications of employment and therefore the resolutions, as I mentioned, subject to the provisions outlined in the town charter, the appointment and dismissal. So that's both for hiring, and if there's for any reason dismissal that for part-time and full-time employees are subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen. As I mentioned, the quarterly basis, groups of seasonal employees also should be brought before the Board of Selectmen. Hiring of temporary employees not requiring the Board of Selectmen. Any changes, as we saw, said in terms of transfers and so forth, when positions are brought forward, as this most recent was, one was today, the Director of Human Resources will attest to the, followed employment policies and practices, any exceptions, postings, interviews, background checks, salary ranges, et cetera, and whether or not the position is budgeted or unbudgeted. And finally, under this resolution, the Board of Selectmen today will retroactively approve a current list of specific part-time and seasonal employees that have not been previously approved by the board. And as I mentioned, the list of the town employees not previously approved is provided in this document. And I would put forward that we approve them. But first, all those four items too. But any comments or questions, happy to address.
I have many questions and I, you know, I, I, I believe this is a totally wrong approach, as I've said in my emails to you. Chapter 44 of the town code deals only with salary employees, right?
No.
Yes, it does. There's nothing in here that, that deals with part-time employees. If the Town Council wants to adopt a policy about part-time employees, which I don't think is necessary, right? But, but if they do, they can change the town code. As the Chief Administrative Officer, I'm required to understand and apply the town code.
We all are.
What you're proposing is inconsistent with the town code. That's why I can't support this.
Okay.
And we, we can go into detail further. So, you know, as I indicated previously, you know, we have about a million dollars of annual spend for part-time employees. We have 300 part-time employees last year, right? We have lifeguards, we have the Gogan instructors at Lapham Center, we have all sorts of people who, the Town, the Board of Selectmen has no opportunity to understand who they are.
Those are seasonal.
No, no, not seasonal.
Those are seasonal.
So if there's an issue here, we need to bring it to the Town Council. This Board of Selectmen has no authority to change the town code or to apply in a way. Now, it's when I talked to Nick, Nick, Nick Biamonte last week, he said, Kevin, I can't tell you you're wrong. So the town attorney has no view on this. Right? This has never come up in my five years. The only prior people that were brought to the Board of Selectmen under Rob Malazey's administration was Steve Banco's Recreation Department. So as far as precedent, right? The precedent is. So as far as precedent, the precedent is overwhelmingly that we haven't brought part time employees to the Board of Selectmen. So so in order to understand some of the nuances of this, we need to talk about individuals in executive session. And so.
So I thank you. I appreciate that. And I've spoken to town council as well and 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 for this memo to address your issue. It's what is referencing in chapter 44 of the town code are all salaried officials, not employees.
That's not correct.
So I'm a salaried official, you're a salaried official, and the other group.
That's absolutely wrong. When I talked to Nick Balmonte, that's exactly what's wrong with your proposal.
Yeah.
Right? Because we couldn't possibly, we couldn't possibly comply with that.
So the other section of that chapter 44 is or employees under the.
Attorney Kathleen, that's not the proper interpretation.
Not my choice.
I am, I am the Chief Administrative Officer. That's not how I read it and we can't possibly apply that. I talked to.
I'm an attorney and her memorandum was spot on legally. And I I mean, I'm sorry, Kevin, but you're wrong.
Okay.
You know, this is the we are the executive branch of the town of New Canaan. You can't deal with the fact that the three of us are the executive branch. You seem to take it upon yourself that you are the executive branch.
So as I said, I'm the Chief Administrative Officer. I disagree strongly with the interpretation. The town attorney tells me I'm not wrong.
Yeah. Well, so they they actually in their memos to us, the most recent ones, they said that this is not a legal issue.
That is correct.
And it's not a legal issue. And that's why they're not here today. But if you want to make a legal issue, we'll bring them forward.
I have to follow the town code.
Follow the town code and the charter, and it's not been followed with respect to part time employees. And so this is what the proposal is. It's quite clear. It's been checked by both attorneys.
That's not true.
Yes, it has. It is true. It's been checked by both attorneys and we've.
Last week afterwards, he gave you no comfort about this policy. So.
Okay, well, check his email that he sent to all of us. And it's it's quite clear. This is not a legal issue. It's very clear. I thank the forefathers to develop both the charter and the code. And they knew what they were doing. They made it quite clear in terms of the role of the Board of Selectmen with respect to approval and of appointments and dismissals of which of town employees, town employees.
All the full time employees, salary employees were not at will employees.
They're not.
They're not.
It's salaried officials, not salaried employees.
You were so wrong. You were so wrong.
Well, if you read the code, you'll see that it's referencing salaried officials and not salaried employees.
Saying that's not a legal question, right? The way you're reading it.
I I'm telling you, it's.
My buddy told me that I am not wrong. So yeah.
That's great. It's quite. It's quite clear and.
Said you can't give money to San Francisco. You deny that. I mean, I this is this is nuts. Are you making a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that again, that resolves first that parts full time and part time employees will be brought before the Board of Selectmen.
Resolve that for part time, for full time employees, salary are always brought to the Board of Selectmen.
Both, both, both categories.
That's the code we have to follow.
Both all employees. It says all employees. It doesn't even distinguish.
Chapter 44 modifies modifies the charter.
By adding salaried officials. Read it. Okay, so it doesn't refer to anything in terms of part time and and full time employee. This is what we're proposing. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution as provided in the memo of December 29, 2022.
I heartily second the motion made by Selectman Corbin.
All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm against it. And I, as the Chief Administrative Officer, I cannot enforce it. So I'm just.
Well, we don't want people to operate without operating under the town charter.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a discussion with.
You're saying publicly, that is the chief administrative officer of this town, you would not abide by a decision made by the Board of Selectmen of this town, which is the executive branch of the town of New Canaan. Is that correct? You're doing this publicly.
My obligation as the Chief Administrative Officer to enforce the bylaws and ordinance of the town. Right? This is contrary to the ordinance of the town. We'll talk about with the town council. And and there will be no.
The town council got to do with this.
Applies to to part time employees. So.
So it will under the the vote that we just had for the Board of Selectmen and our, I think our staff understands that they have to operate under the vote as well.
And Cheryl now, Cheryl now understands. I spent last a lot of time on this last week, right? And talking to the. Cheryl now understands why this has been confusing in the past because the charter is not what governs. The code does and the code applies to salary employees. That's the only thing we can do.
Salary officials. And I'm happy to bring this memo. We're we're passing it here in the Board of Selectmen. I'm happy to bring it before the town council.
Okay, we'll have that discussion with the town council.
Thank you.
Okay. We still need to go into executive session on personnel matters. We have.
Why?
We have three items to discuss.
Okay.
So.
Not related to this part time issue, correct?
I think you need to understand a few things about that part time issue, which is would have guided you guided to your judgment. But that's not against.
You didn't share it before.
Can't discuss it, people in public.
Let's go to Selectman's comments then before we go to executive session.
I'd like to or or go to Foley.
I we can't take that up until we have executives executive session. So.
What?
So it can come out of.
I'm the chairman of this committee.
So we can come out of.
Out of executive session and talk about anything else, right?
Okay. I'd like to see, are we going to do Selectman's comments after we come out of executive session? The question is, would you like them now or?
Let's do it later then.
Later. Okay.
So I move we go to executive session at 9:29. The only person to stay is Cheryl Jones. Okay, we're out of executive session, as I said.
Smile, everybody.
Just a couple of quick comments, if if I may, just update on the Utilities Commission. I spoke with Town Councilman Tom Butterworth over the holiday. He's working on looking at what changes might need to be made to the code on the Utilities Commission. There is one word that could use an update instead of, I think it says telegraph. And obviously, that should be updated perhaps to telecommunications, which would be completely appropriate. We also talked about other matters that Utilities Commission could possibly consider in the future, in addition to cell tower coverage, could be things such as water resources, as well as things such as a electric charging vehicles, having a source of electric, electric charging services and others. So anyway, it's moving along. We'd like to, I'd like to suggest that anybody interested in, we currently have three members. I we want to reach out and to see whether or not they're continued interest in serving on the Utilities Commission. But anybody else who's interested, kindly send your CV and perhaps a a letter to the Board of Selectmen, BOS Distribution at newcananct.gov. And we'll begin to review those and consider for the reinstatement of the Utilities Commission. So thank you. I want to thank the town council for their work on this as well.
Yeah, I was delighted to see the town council, I think unanimously, support our re reworking of the Utilities Commission, repopulation. And likewise, I would encourage folks who have an interest in serving on that to to put their hand up. We've got great volunteers in town. We certainly have people who can bring expertise to this this endeavor, excuse me. So thank you. Thanks for the town hall. Thanks to the town council and we move forward.
I had one other item. And that is, as we've been thinking about going through, everybody's been spending time with the town charter and the town code. And just as a reminder, the last time we had a charter revision commission ended with a a vote from our town's electorate was in 2016. So it was six years ago. And we typically every 10 years or so bring the the charter for review and revision. As I said, we're six years away from the last time. And if you think about when's the perhaps opportune time to bring any changes if to about a charter in front of the electorate, it's probably where you expect to have the most people coming to vote. And that's typically in a presidential election. So if you think about that, and if you wait the full four years for a charter revision commission to be established, that's outside of the presidential election. So so I would recommend, and it takes a while to number one, number one, sort of establish it. Consider it, obviously, we bring it before the town council as well. So.
This is town council jurisdiction.
So it's it's I I'm making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And obviously, I'll make the same to the town council that we should take that under consideration, possibly if you back it up and say maybe with a consideration of whatever changes to the charter would be brought before the the electorate in 2024. So that would be eight years instead of the the full 10, but that's just going to be a recommendation that I'm making. I just wanted to share it with you before I did so.
Think the town council's already stopped talking a different schedule. So.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll I'll share them with my thoughts. So.
It's not a bad idea with respect to the the number of voters turning out.
Nine, over 90%.
Yeah.
Yeah, voter show. Anyway.
But that's that's really a town council.
I'll bring it before the town council. Yeah.
And I would like to bring forward Paul Foley as a candidate to re up him, as it were, as Police Commissioner. Paul moved to New Canaan. I see Paul's on. In 1987, he was the chairman of the RTC from 97 to 2002, served on town council from 2002 to 2010, fire commissioner, 2010 to 2013, and police commissioner from 2013 to present. He's been chairman for the past two years. He would like another term. He's been a member of the Exchange Club. Kevin, you and I are members of that for almost 20 years. He's served on the Congregational Church's Missions Committee for six years. And as a trustee for two years, he worked in the financial community. He is currently a member of the Police Headquarters Building Committee. And by the way, he was vice. I'm sorry, I said member. Did I say head? I apologize. He was Vice Chairman of the Town Council, by the way, for two years. Steve Call has reached out to us. Kathleen, I think you got the letter as well. Steve says in part, given that we just received notice of our longtime chief retiring, coupled with our major new police department renovation, it is imperative that we do everything we can to keep our existing commission intact. Commissioner Foley has years of experience on the town council, fire, and now police. His perspective and historical knowledge of the department, coupled with the research and work on the new project are invaluable, and I would hate to see us lose them at such a critical time. So I think it's imperative that we reappoint Commissioner Foley to another term as Police Commissioner.
I would say that, you know, two weeks ago, I had a conversation with Paul, you know, for two years, I've had other candidates who want to serve on the Police Commission. Paul has served well and I asked to step aside. He he can still be a member of the Police Department Building Committee, which Bill Walbert chairs and Stuart Savini, 10 year chairman of the Police Commission, contributes importantly to that that body. I just think it's time. Paul increasingly spends most of his time in Florida, and I think it's time to to move on to and give, you know, chief deferico a fresh start with a new a new commission. So that's candidly where I am. I told you that and.
Well, you're actively looking to not appoint.
No.
Paul. Well, no, you 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 talked to Russ Parkstill and.
I've talked to candidates for two years. You know, other people want to serve. And and when you've served so long, it's it's time to move on. I mean, you know, I we've seen that with other boards and commissions. I I respect Paul. And I I thank him for his service, but you know, it's time to move on. Paul obviously wants to lobby for a job that he he has served well, but it's time to move on. So they're quite candid about that. So.
I think Paul should have the opportunity to speak for himself.
Yeah, I'm on if I if I may. I do spend some time in Florida, but I'm also a New Canaan resident, pay taxes to the state of Connecticut, pay taxes to the town of New Canaan. And then back and forth to New Canaan regularly. I'm down here a few months out of the year. I've missed one meeting in my entire tenure on the on the commission. And that was back in 2017. It was back in November, and I think I was off in Asia on a family trip. We're in the middle of a number of promotions. We're in number middle of a building process, a program. And I think that my knowledge of how the police department works and how it functions is pretty important right now, rather than putting in somebody who knows nothing about the functions of a of a police department. I've been involved in a number of the hirings and promotions. And right now during this, this, you know, 20 plus million dollar project, I, you know, I visited a number of police departments. I worked with the architect. I worked with the building committee. And and I like to stay on just to finish this project. After that, I'm fine with with getting off the commission. But at this stage, I'd like to stay on. And the other two commissioners wanted me to stick on. Bill Walbert wants me to stay on. So.
I can attest to all those.
I'd like to stay on the building committee, Paul. As I told you.
And I said, Kevin, and I told you.
You let Paul speak, please, Kevin.
And as I told you, I will not be on, I will not serve on the building committee if I'm not a commissioner. I just don't have any standing. I'm just another town resident on a building committee, and that's not the role I want to play. I won't do. I will step down. I'll I'll step down.
Paul has been a tireless supporter of the new building, a building which has been delayed because of your obfuscation with with respect to, you know, ideas that had no traction whatsoever politically. You wanted to put a new police department in Saks playing fields, which I think is the world's worst idea ever. That delayed things, folks. And by the way, that's going to cost hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in additional funding because of bond rates. Because we this whole process has been slowed down because of your machinations behind the scene.
And I would say.
We need Foley there.
Because he's he's. I would say we needed a new police department building for $21 million. Had we sold the South Avenue property for for housing, which we desperately need, we would have had a $12 million swing. So in terms of the cost of the project, that's on you.
No, it's on you.
And.
It's on you.
I.
We're doing what I wanted to do. And I think Selectman Corbin wanted to do two years, three years ago. Okay? All of this was delayed because of your stuff going on.
Okay. So.
So thank you for the additional tax and money that we have to put up because of the delays.
Is it my turn? So I didn't know if we're going to bring this forward or not. But since you both have put it forward, I would just say that I've completed my due diligence regarding the opening at on the Police Commission. I've had conversations with all the candidates brought to me, including Commissioner Foley. I've reviewed their qualifications and experience, and I understand and truly appreciate their interest and willingness to serve. I've spoken individually with the other commissioners, both Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner McLaughlin. And I understand their current views on the importance of continuity with the commission representation on the Police Board, Police Department Building Committee and leadership transition in the department. I've spoken with the Chair of the Police Department Building Committee, Bill Walbert, and I understand the committee's interest in the continuity of the representation of the commission during this time. I've spoken with the Chairs of the RTC, Chris Wilson and the DTC, Christina Fagerstall. They both understand that is the decision of the Board of Selectmen to appoint the best candidate at the right time. The RTC has not formally endorsed either any of the candidates that I have met with. The DTC has not put forth any Democratic candidates for this position. Like you, I've also received a memo from the Town Council Chair, Steve Carl, in support of the continuity for the upcoming term of appointment. So I whether you want to do this now, today, unless you have any other candidates other than the ones I've already met, I would recommend that we move forward with this recommendation. I'm not, you had mentioned, am I supporting you or am I supporting Nick? I'm supporting the town.
That's not what was discussed.
I'm supporting the town.
That was discussed, Kathleen.
I'm supporting the town in terms of in terms of the Police Commission, and I want to thank Commissioner Foley for the service that he's provided thus far. And I would vote to have that continue for the length of his time or when he chooses to step down.
So to be clear, I'm making I've made a motion to reappoint and you're seconding that.
I'll second. Yes.
And vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
You're against. Okay.
Okay. I move adjourned 10:16.
If I could say one thing, please, I want to thank the support from Nick and Kathleen. You know, I love this town tremendously. I have tremendous respect for the men and women of the New Canaan Police Department. And I look forward to finishing off this project in the next three years. And I appreciate Nick and Kathleen's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I don't know a bigger supporter of of our police than you. So appreciate what you've done and what you're going to do going forward.